Good evening. I'd like to call the General Committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interests of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Amen.
Mr. Long, would you lead us in a pledge, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Rule call, please, Ms. Votchak.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Lemoine is not with us. Ms. Daisart?
Here.
Ms. Rodney?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Votchak. First item on the agenda are committee assignments for 2024. And in your folder, you will see the committee meeting assignments. And as discussed previously, if anyone has any changes that you would like to make, or if you would prefer to serve on a different committee, please let me know before the regular monthly meeting, and we can make that change. Okay? Any discussion on that item, and we'll name the committee at the regular meeting. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the presentation of the school board member training certificates for the 2023 calendar year. And this was for the school board member training. And as with all educators, the school board is also subject by law to attend continued education classes. And in your packet, you will see that these certificates are presented to individual board members who have, based on the records provided to Louisiana School Boards Association, for Louisiana Revised Statute Title 1753, this indicates that the above school board members have attained learning units for the calendar year of 2023. And in your packet, you will see each of the individual board members and the hours that they have attained. And the members attaining the particular hours are Donald Campbell, Diana Daisart, Millie Harris, Carly Jackson, Kelly Lee Bowman, Catherine Lemoine, Joseph Long, Kisa Rodney, Henry Rodriguez, Sean Warner, and Rosalyn White. So we can accept those into our minutes. Is there a motion on the floor at this time to accept these for the minutes?
I'll make a motion that we accept them.
Motion by Mr. Warner.
Second by Ms. Lee Bowman. Any discussion?
Okay, there being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the recognition of certified school board members for the 2023 calendar year. And before you, you have a resolution, again, for school board member training resolution. And I'll read that resolution. It reads as such, "Whereas each member of a city and parish school board shall receive a minimum of six hours of training and instruction as required by the Act 705 of the Louisiana Legislature," that was the 2011 Louisiana Legislature, "whereas this training and instruction shall consist of school laws of the state, laws governing the powers, duties, and responsibilities of city and parish school boards, educational trends, research and policy, and whereas such instruction may be received from an institution of higher education in this state, from instructions sponsored by the State Department of Education, or by in-service training conducted by a city or parish school board's central office, or the Louisiana School Boards Association, or training provided at the national level. And whereas each member of a city and parish school board may receive one hour of ethics training per year of their tenure as board member. Now, therefore be it resolved that it become public record that Donald Campbell, Diana Daisart, Millie Harris, Carly Jackson, Kelly Lee Bowman, Catherine Lemoine, Joseph Long, Kisa Rodney, Henry Rodriguez III, Sean Warner, and Rosalyn White, members of the St. Bernard Parish School Board, have successfully received and exceeded the six hours of required training as mandated by the Louisiana Legislature, and all board members have fulfilled the mandate of one hour of ethics training for the year 2023, given under our hand and seal of the St. Bernard Parish School Board on this 27th day of February 2024. And of course, we'll pass this at the regular meeting. But is there a motion on the floor to send this to the regular meeting? Okay, there's a motion, Mr. Campbell. Is there a second? A second by Ms. Rodney. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an update on the literacy program.
The, um, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two point two.
Two point, I'm passing up a dime. I'm so sorry. Okay. Next item is the recognition of certified school board members for the 2023 calendar year. And in your folder, there is a letter from Janet Pope, from the Louisiana School Boards Association. And these certificates are for certified board members program and attaining of the St. Bernard Parish School Board for voluntarily completing our required in-service training by participating in approved workshops, seminars, and conventions designed to enhance knowledge and develop skills needed to contribute to even higher standards of elected public school board members, public service, public school system governance, and is officially designated as a certified school board member for the 2023 year by attaining 20 or more continuing learning units. And this certificate is presented to the individuals who have attained that additional credit hours by Janet Pope, the LSBA Executive Director. And attaining those hours is Ms. Millie Harris, Catherine Lemoine, and Kisa Rodney. Congratulations, and great job, girls. Okay. Next item on the agenda is an education item. Ms. White?
Thank you. Agenda number three point one, update on literacy program.
Hello. Yeah, how are you?
All right. So I want to give an update on the literacy initiatives for our school district this year. We just finished our literacy screener for the middle of the year. So I looked at the scores last year this time to this year to see how are we growing the initiatives that we have in place. We have new literacy coaches in our district that are assisting our teachers and also modeling for them and working with the students and the teachers on interventions. So as you can see, in across our district, we grew about eight percent from the middle of the year last year to the middle of the year this year, looking at the exact same literacy screener. So it was the composite score for what we call our DIBELS eight assessment to our composite score for DIBELS eight for this year. In kindergarten, we grew by 17%. First grade, nine percent. Second grade, two percent. And third grade, one percent. Something that I did not include on here, but I also did an analysis for our English language learner students, which is really exciting that our kindergarten English language learners grew 29%. Our first grade grew 27%. Our second graders, who are English language learners, grew 38%. And our third graders grew 36%. So I thought that was wonderful growth that we saw in our lower grades, which makes sense because we immerse them in the language and their reading ability also. We close those deficits. Also, our special education students, kindergarten, they grew by seven percent. First grade, 10%. Second grade, 1%. And third grade, 6%. So that is looking at the exact same assessment for 12 months, over a 12-month period. So I thought that was really exciting, showing that our interventions are working, that we have our, we have two intervention programs that we use in our district now. One's called Hagerty, and one is called Ufly. And it's scripted lessons for the teachers when the students have a deficit in a certain area. They isolate that deficit and really hone in on that skill to work with the students. So we're really excited about that. Our individual literacy improvement plans, any students that were below level at the beginning of the year, our kindergarten through third grade teachers met with the parents and discussed what strategies they were working with with the students, and also things that the teachers do in class, and also what parents can do at home to assist the students so that they become better readers. We also are still doing our Ames Pathway Science of Reading, which that is a program that teaches our teachers foundations of literacy. We also have our Teach St. Bernard candidates, who are alternative certification teachers, in that program. So even if they're teaching high school, they're still learning about foundational reading, so that when they have students that come to them, even in high school, English language learners, our special education students that are still struggling readers, they then have that knowledge to help close those deficits, even at that level. So we're really excited about that. And of course, our kindergarten through third grade teachers are also in that program. That is part of what is required for Bullets in 1903. We're just starting up with our spring real-time and Steve Carter tutoring. We had tutoring in the fall, and we start our new cycle in January, and we'll finish up in May and then begin a new cycle of tutoring. Those are for students who are in kindergarten through third grade, who are below level in literacy. And it's one-on-one tutoring with our own teachers after school to work on those deficits. So that's really exciting. And then we still have our after-school tutoring for our fourth and fifth grade students that are trying to close those deficits for those students also. So right now, we have about 225 elementary students that are doing that. So any questions that y'all might have about literacy, or?
Do we have any questions?
I know that was a lot.
Millie?
So in looking at our growth, right, it's comparing first grade this year to first grade last year.
First grade, yeah.
So can we also look at how our first graders did last year out of 48 to where the second graders are this year out of 60?
Absolutely.
And say that they have grown significantly?
Absolutely, because that's the same group of students.
That's excellent.
Yeah, it really is.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions?
I have a question.
John?
So the tutoring program, is that just for fourth and fifth graders?
So we have kindergarten through fifth grade, but it's different grant programs that we use. So we have for kindergarten through third grade, well, actually kindergarten through fifth now. It initially was kindergarten through third, but now it's kindergarten through fifth, is real-time tutoring, or the Steve Carter literacy tutoring initiative that is through the LDOE. For fourth and fifth, that are, those are our teachers in the district that we're doing after-school tutoring for our students.
What is the, I'm sorry, the Steve Carter, what is that?
Steve Carter. So that is a program through the State Department that is to target students who are below level in reading, to try to catch them up before they hit those middle grades, and they're really doing that critical thinking. And like I said, initially, it was really geared at kindergarten through third grade, our lower level, our lower elementary grades. But now they've extended it through kindergarten through fifth grade.
Steve Carter was a state legislator who, at one point, chaired the House Education Committee and was very active in education throughout the state. And he passed away. So what the legislature did was put forth this initiative in this Steve Carter tutoring program, but they didn't fund it. So there was no money to support that tutoring program. With the ESER funding that we all know is going to expire in September of 2024, just as all local school districts got ESER funding, the state got a set aside portion that the state controlled. So what they have done the past two to three years is used some of that ESER funding to support the Steve Carter initiative. Now, that will also run out in September of 2024. I just viewed an MFP Task Force Committee meeting, which, as we all know, will be the proposed funding formula for next year. And what they, what the state seems to be trying to do is to incorporate a sum of money under the MFP for this after-school, for this tutoring program, which could be after school or could be during school as well, under that umbrella of the Steve Carter funding. So to try to keep that going even after the ESER money expires. So we'll know if there'll be additional state funding once this legislative session is over, to continue this particular program.
I hope the infinite wisdom of the state legislature funds this program for us. Thank you, Dr. Thatchlamachio.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to say that those increases in improvement was significant, and great job to our teachers and personnel, and to our students, too. It's great that they are making strides in literacy and at each level. And I'm so glad that we've extended it not only from K to third grade, but the fourth and fifth also, because we all know the foundation continues throughout the elementary years.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Back to you, Diane. Thank you, Ms. White. Okay, next item on the agenda, the review of performance contracts. And in your folder.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. So we have two items on the agenda. The first is the review information on 23 of our administrators who are up for their two-year renewal on their performance contracts.
And these 23 administrators, then, I'm going to be, you know, recommending I'm renewing their contracts for another two-year period. And I think we just need a motion from the board to just receive this.
Is there a motion on the floor at this time?
I'll make a motion that we receive the personnel item, review of performance contracts.
Okay, Mr. Warner makes the motion. Ms. Lee Bowman seconds. Any discussion? Okay, there being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero. And just to really say that every one of our administrators we have, we put on a two-year performance contract. So half of them are up this year. Next year, you'll see the other half. So if the names of some administrators are not on here, that means they're on the other cycle.
And also to say that these 23 individuals are excellent, excellent administrators, and I'm glad that they're staying with us for another two years. Thank you.
Yes, indeed.
Okay. All right, next item, personnel changes.
Yes. You should have those changes for the meeting tonight. You'll see that we have four people, four of our very valued employees, who will be retiring. They are not retiring just yet. We do have one of them until the end of the school year, Ms. Karen Mallorine at Schumett High School. She's one of our gifted teachers. And then, at the end of June, unfortunately, and congratulations to them, Ms. Deidra Major, our Smith principal, will be retiring. Trevor Smith, who is one of our computer service managers here at the central office, he will be retiring at the end of June. And Ms. Leann Harleton, our supervisor of instruction, she's been here for a long time. She will be retiring at the end of June. So.
The, you know, we're getting, I guess we're getting to that point, you know, when I, when I see this, there's a great deal of sadness that I feel. I mean, I'm happy for these, you know, for these particular people to move on, to go into retirement, to do some things that they've been waiting on. The school system is going to be suffering a tremendous loss, that they will no longer be day-to-day people within our school system. I mean, Karen Mallorine is an excellent math teacher who has gotten certified in our gifted program as well. And she will be just as sorely missed for her piano recitals. And she plays a lot for our performing arts kids, and I mean, does so many, so many different things for our students at Schumett High School. And I know that, I know the person that she is, I'm sure she'll be coming back to work with those performing arts kids, because once that gets in your blood, it just doesn't get out. Deidra Major, I mean, exceptional principal educator, grew up in our parish school system, just as Karen has, and has done an absolutely tremendous job leading Smith Elementary School, and even before that, years ago, at Borogard Middle, for those of you who remember, as we go back that far and moving up through the ranks within the community and within our school system, a tremendous loss. Trevor Smith is our IT manager, so that's going to be someone very difficult to replace as well, who's done an excellent job for us, and will be retiring. And then, what can I say about Leann Harleton? I mean, just an absolute gem. I mean, Leann has been with the school system over 50 years, coming up as a teacher and administrator after Katrina hit, someone that we relied on so heavily to help rebuild this school system. Remember being out there with her as we were opening the Unified School and being up till midnight the night before. And then, when she reopened Andrew Jackson as a K-6 school, being out there the night before with all of us, her husband, her family, and everybody trying to get that building and that facility ready, you know, to accept kids when we opened that one in August of 2006, when we reopened that. I just can't say enough about Leann, as she led the, you know, leads the elementary effort and spills over into every aspect of our administration. And I can tell you, as a principal of the school, she knew the name of every kid. She knew their mother, their father, their sister, their brothers, and everybody in their family. And I'd almost venture to say she still does, you know. So tremendous loss. So these four people are really going to be a significant loss for us as we move forward. So.
I worked under Leann as a teacher, and I can remember the last days of the school. She would actually have each child walk by the camera and say their names, tell them goodbye, say my, you know, call them by name. And she knew, she literally knew every child. Difficult.
I can attest to that also. When my children were in school, and she, she got moved as principal to the Joe Davies, our first year, Joe Davies, she was the principal there.
Yeah.
And that first year, I mean, Joe Davies was a combination of
Yep.
two different districts. And she knew all those, those children's names also by my mid-year. And as you said, Ms. Votchak, you know, Leann has, has been with us many, many years. I don't know how many years total she has.
Over 50.
Over 50. But she's got just, she's still tenacious and, you know, has a wealth of knowledge and sincerity. And she will definitely be missed. And, you know, like you said, it's sad. You're happy for her, but sad for our sister. But she's been a wonderful friend.
Right. Each and every one of these people going to be a tremendous loss.
Absolutely.
Huge loss in their schools and in their communities.
And as you said, Karen Mallorine, that's another one, just so sincere and dear and
Don's daughter.
Don's daughter, Mr. Campbell, and so talented and just, you know, she's been, she's been a wonderful, wonderful mentor to many children.
Yeah.
And she will definitely be missed. Deidra Major, same thing. Deidra has been an excellent principal and beforehand a teacher. And I think she was a kindergarten teacher, huh, Ms. Votchak? I think she started.
She was in middle school at Borogard before. Then when Katrina hit and everybody scattered, she was in Orleans for a while when I was going to open Smith. I went and got her and said, I need you to come back and be the principal at Smith.
And she came back to me.
Yes.
She's been wonderful. And she's another one that knows, you know, the kids, the parents, and just been, you know, true, true green, you know, and salt of the earth. And, you know, Trevor, he's, Trevor's too young to retire. I mean, I think of him as a
He's been over 30 years. Well, he's been to other places in 30 years.
He seems young to us, I guess, because he hasn't had as much as I know, the longevity, you know. But Trevor's been unbelievable. And he's, as you said, he's going to be hard to replace. And they're all going to be very hard to replace. But we do want to wish each and every one of our retirees a happy retirement.
Yes.
But you each will be missed dearly. Mr. Campbell?
Yes. I'm trying to talk to my daughter about one of the, I couldn't talk.
She didn't, huh? She didn't bite?
She didn't do it, huh?
She was a former student also, as was Deidra Major, a wonderful student.
Yes.
As was, I saw Penderson, they were probably that one. And Leann was principal of this before this.
Well, she was actually principal of Bournemouth, and then moved over to Mero Elementary. And then when we opened Davies, went to Davies. Yes.
They will be missed.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Yes, we had Ms. Harris.
You can let Ms. Rodney go first.
Okay, Ms. Rodney, go ahead.
I want to congratulate Ms. Major on her retirement. I have two daughters who went under Ms. Major, who totally adore. I cannot speak so much about Ms., Deidra does so much for that school. Like kids, she will go above and beyond. Some things that a parent, you would think a principal would do, she does. She's always, she has an open door policy. Any parent can see her about anything. And I think she just made my time with my kids very, very awesome. I know she will be greatly missed. As well, I do know Ms. Harleton, Ms. Harleton was over me at Bournemouth when I was in school. She was, she was, my last name was Franklin at that time.
Oh, okay.
I do remember Ms. Harleton as a principal, my most vivid memory of us, at Halloween Festival. She always dressed as a witch. Always, it never failed. And she, she always did. So, you know, congratulations to everybody that's leaving. I hate to see people leave to that caliber that you guys speak of. But I'm pretty sure we're gonna find
I'm gonna work hard. Thank you.
...that's gonna do even better job, if it can be.
If it can be done, yes.
Well, they've been trained well by these people who are
Yes, yes, definitely.
Okay, Ms. Harris?
Yeah. So I'm just wondering if we could receive maybe some demographic information on our personnel. I know that we do PEP twice a year, so I know you probably haven't, and it's not easy to put together, but at least it's there. Because as I look at it and I think about folks who are eligible for retirement, I think it would be great to see kind of where folks who are eligible for retirement, I think it would be great to see kind of where we are in that spectrum, how heavy are we with folks who are blessed to be able to go that way, right?
With experience. She always has been experienced.
So, yeah, I would just love to see some of that, that would be excellent.
That'd be interesting, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
Everybody.
You too. Okay, next item on the agenda is a finance item. Ms. Lee Bowman.
Item number 5.1, request for permission to advertise to bid for bread and bread products for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. Mr. Malau.
Hi, it's good evening, everyone. It's that time of year again to start preparing for next year, so I'm here to request permission to bid for bread products for the upcoming school year from July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025.
Do we have a motion? Are there any questions?
No, just going to make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Sean Warner. Do I have a second? A second for Ms. White. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes, Ms. Harris, 10-0.
All right, we have item number 5.2, request for permission to advertise to bid for milk and milk products for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
Yes, that's the next, like I said, for the upcoming school year, for, request permission to advertise for milk products for July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
Do we have any questions on the board?
I'll second.
We have a motion from Ms. Jackson, and second by Mr. Long. Please cast your votes. I'm sorry, Mr. Warner.
It's okay, I'll, I'll ask one or next one. It's just a general question.
Motion passes, 10-0.
Item number 5.3, request for permission to advertise to bid for food products for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
Yes, I'm here to request permission to advertise for those food products, like all of our canned goods and things like that, for the bid period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
I'm sorry, I missed, I'm sorry, I think Sean had a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, you seeing our grocery prices move any down, coming down a little bit, or are they still floating up?
No, they kind of stabilized a good bit. We went to the really, the earlier part of this year, they went up a little bit, and then prior year before that, they were up, that was the biggest jump, but now they kind of stabilized them quite a bit. It's, it's pretty, let's see, obviously, it didn't balance out to where it was before, but we're very, the increase in the, it's not going up as much as it did before.
Can you put together maybe a spreadsheet, just basic, yeah, comparison, just year over year? I don't need to see every item, just year over year total.
I sure will, yes.
Okay.
I can do that, Mr. Long, yes, sir.
Mr. Morell, what's currently your food cost?
So roughly, right now, our average plate cost is right about like $4.80 per child. And that's for, that's for lunch.
Breakfast and lunch?
No, that was, that's just lunch. Breakfast is right about, right about $2, maybe like $2.25, about that.
That's pretty good, because, I mean, you know, I manage hotels, and our breakfast cost alone is $4.85 per gas in the hotel, so. Ms. Harris, did you have a question?
Yes, I just, just for a general knowledge question, so I see that the fruit is done like on a monthly?
Yes, it is.
What's the difference between the fruit and the other products that it's broken down in that way?
So we, we're going to request a bid for the year, but it's broken down monthly, because produce does, it does fluctuate a lot from month to month, obviously, because like, for instance, like oranges, sometimes they'll come from outdoors California, and sometimes they'll come from like Florida, right? Depending on the month, they like fluctuate because of transportation and things like that. So they do fluctuate a little bit, it's not a whole lot, maybe a dollar a case, or it might fluctuate a dollar a case more per month, and then, so Florida might be a little bit cheaper, like lettuce is a big, is a big one, because the two main, where lettuce is grown is a lot in Arizona and a lot in California, and they rotate those crops. So getting those crops and harvesting those crops and getting them here, and transportation and shipping, it does change, so it does fluctuate the price a little bit from month to month, but not drastic, you know, so that's, that's really why, and produce companies really not going to lock in a price for an entire year.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, thanks for educating me.
Any more questions from the board? Do I have a motion? I'll send you. Ms. Diana Isart, and motion, and then Ms. Jackson, second a motion. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes, 10-0.
So we have 5.3, item 5.3, request for permission to advertise to bid for food products for the period of July 1st, oh, I'm sorry. Item number 5.4, request for permission to advertise to bid for produce for the period of July 1st to July 24th through June 30th to June 2025.
Yes, so I request permission to advertise for those fresh fruits and vegetables, the period from August 1st through July 31st, 2025.
Ms. Jackson?
Second.
And then, second by Mr. Warner. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes, 10-0.
And then item number 5.5, tabulation of proposals for wireless networks. He's, he's coming right now. He's just getting his paperwork, I'm sorry.
Good evening. At the end of November, the board gave permission for the administration to publish a request for proposals to redo the wireless networks at each of our school sites. Before you, you have the bid tabulation, or excuse me, the RFP tabulation for those proposals. As you can see at the top, we received four proposals, Lockstep, Executone, Detail, and Comtech are the four companies that submitted proposals. Scoring was done based on three major divisions, cost, 50 points, qualifications and experience of the vendor, 25 points, and the evaluation of the equipment itself, 25 points. The maximum points are determined by the number of individuals that were on the scoring committee, which was four. So you can see from the scoring of the scoring committee that Executone is being recommended based on the fact that they have earned 354 points on the overall scoring of the RFP. Below that, you have the cost analysis broken down for you in a couple of categories.
Any questions from the board?
Who made up the committee? Sorry, Mr. Brown, who made up the committee?
The committee was made up of myself, Michael Harleton, Matt Tucker, and Jared Smith.
Mr. Long.
So Conrad, this is just to replace the system that we, we had in place already?
That's correct.
This is not our wireless service?
No, no, this is just to replace the wireless access points in each one of the classrooms and other locations around the building, and it includes the management licensing for each of those access points, so that we can control them from a remote location when necessary.
So Executone, they weren't the lowest bidder, but they, they won it through the point system, correct?
That's correct.
It's quite a bit of money, $170,000, I believe, the difference between the next lowest.
Sure.
And the point, the points are relatively close. I guess, did the committee consider maybe giving it to the lowest bidder, or they have to, they are forced to accept the point system?
The committee was concerned about the product that was being proposed by Lockstep, and that no one on the committee was familiar with the product. In addition, Lockstep provided seven references, in which we contacted all seven, and not one single one of those references actually uses the product. In addition, there was a requirement in the RFP that the proposal must include the data specification sheets that are printed and produced by the manufacturer, and those were not present in the RFP either, and therefore, the committee felt like they could not evaluate the product based on the proposal that they submitted.
So the evaluation of the equipment was done by the committee itself?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any more questions from the board?
So basically, Mr. Brown, they did not meet the specifications of the bid requirement, correct?
They did not meet the specification of the bid requirement in regards to the data sheets that were required from the manufacturer, that's correct. And we were not able to verify any other information based on the references that they provided.
Remember, these are not bids, these are proposals. And there are certain items where you put out what's called an RFP, a request for proposals, where when you score it, you are allowed, and a lot of that is in the technology sector, that you're allowed, you are allowed to consider other parts to a proposal, not just sheer cost, and this is where, when you look at the points, as they evaluated it, so it's not a bid, it is a proposal for a piece of technology, and then that management part to it, and I don't know how to exactly explain that.
Sounds good to me.
Conrad can do that much more effectively than I can, but, you know, the law provides for this, and these are irritable items.
Mr. Brown, correct me if I'm wrong, you said that the lowest bid not only didn't meet the specifications, but the references that they claimed, you checked those out, and those references, references, those companies never did use this product?
The references that they provided were references for the company itself, but not for the product.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
No problem.
Any more questions from the board? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept Executone for wireless networks.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Long. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes, 10-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lee Bowman. Next item is executive item, Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mrs. Isart, Executive Committee, this is update on Safe Schools Advisory Committee. Do we have?
Okay, the Safe Schools Advisory Committee met, I'm not sure if I have the exact, can you show me what you have in there?
Yeah.
And what you can see is, those are the minutes of the meeting, the members who were present, and then we had three staff members who made presentations for the initial meeting. Those presentations, Ms. Isart read the mission and purpose of the committee, we did presentations in three major areas, the first one being an overview of our current prevention and mentoring and social emotional programs, which you can see listed in the committee minutes. The second area, the counseling and the mental health services that we currently provide, that was discussed among the committee members, and then the school safety programs, discipline policies, and procedures, and Ms. Lichardi presented those to the committee of what we currently had in place, to give everyone a frame of reference of where we were starting from. And there was a lot of discussion, you know, when you get that many people together, there's a lot of discussion among these particular topics, and I think it was very beneficial that Judge Bob was there, you know, to give it an outside perspective, and of course, as well as the committee members, we had Judge Bob from the judiciary, who was a committee member, and then two representatives from the sheriff's department, Lieutenant Canepa and Major Bostick, and then from the DA's office as well, to give their perspectives. So the first meeting was basically to see what we had in place, and as we discussed the services that we currently have, to ask the committee where would, what, what would we like to delve more deeply into, into the future meetings, to come up with the topics that we can start going in-depth on at each meeting. And as you can see, the major issues that they brought up, the metal detectors versus the winding that we do, you know, we have the winding at the middle and high schools, they wanted to take a look at how the metal detectors would be in relation to that. Cell phone guidelines, a lot of people talked about how, what should we, or should we not do in terms of cell phones. Those two particular items, Ms. Lichardi is gathering currently information on what other school systems are doing with that, for us to have more of an in-depth discussion on those two particular areas. We even talked a bit about also surveying parents too, once we get through this, to see, okay, we're discussing these particular areas, how do you feel about metal detectors, or the winding, what are your preferences, and try to construct that into a survey once we get that initial information. So those two pieces were the main issues coming out of this third sector. A lot of discussion on parent involvement and accountability, you know, how do we get the parents much more involved, coming to the meetings, being more involved with their kids' education? And then, to be honest, a lot of discussion is, how do we hold parents accountable sometimes to work with us as partners with their children for their educational and behavioral advancement? So we're looking into what can we do to kind of walk that fine line with a lot of voluntary, voluntary parent participation, and where do we get to the point, and can we mandate some things if certain behaviors continue to persist, and how they may be the judiciary and the DA's office can help us with that, because sometimes we have to maybe do some of these mandates. The counseling services and the emergency psychological evaluations, this was a, a big topic too. I mean, everybody really understands that the more counseling services we can provide, the better off we are. But we also realize, and we came to the understanding, that we are mainly an educational institution. We are not, we're not set up to do long-term therapy with children for maybe deep-seated issues. We're there to provide mental health and services for kids to learn how to work within the educational environment and improve their academic achievement, and if there's a need for more long-term or deeper services, then we need to have, I guess, referrals that are going to see these children and their families, and I think that's one of the big pieces that we're missing here, is the ability of many of our families to access those locally. So we're looking into that. The emergency psychological evaluations, we talked about there many times, you know, I guess it's, it's the world in which we live now, and if you would say 20 years ago, if an eight-year-old said to another eight-year-old, and again, this is my opinion here, I am talking, an eight-year-old said to another eight-year-old, he gets mad, he says, "I'm going to kill you," then you dealt with that as one kid saying that to another, and you didn't really look beyond that statement. You talked about what was appropriate to say and what not to say. In today's world... In today's world, when one child says that to another child, parents get very upset, and rightly so, because we see actions of people throughout our country and throughout the world, and they're looking for something to be done immediately. And what we can only do as an educational institution, we have to assess the situation and see how significant a threat that would be. And there are times when we have to try to have an emergency evaluation done, and that's very hard to do. Because if you're a family and you're trying to have access to a psychiatrist or psychologist in some way, who has been trained in those areas, it's very difficult to get an immediate appointment. So we may, we're beginning to tap some of our sources, which, or, you know, LSU, who deals heavily with us at our Raleigh site, to see if they would be maybe amenable if we had a situation where maybe a child, a young child made a threat, that we could immediately say, let's, let's get that eval, let's get an evaluation of that child. And along with the, you know, law enforcement also does always a check of the home environment to see if there's access to any weapons or anything like that. So those, that was a lengthy discussion on those services. And then a biggie, the responsible use of social media. We have made, I don't know how many efforts in counseling with our own kids, especially, it used to start at the middle school level heavily, we're finding it with fourth and fifth graders now even, it's going lower and lower, younger and younger kids. But at the middle school level, where we are constantly making presentations, and we're partnering with law enforcement, with the State Attorney General's Office, to be perfectly honest, as we bring them in, to see how we can impress upon kids that you can't do these postings, or these are not, where is that line between a social interaction and sometimes something that could border on a criminal action? Or something that is very threatening, bullying, those kinds of things? So to do a much more intensive effort with children on responsible use of social media. Well, these were the highlights, these were the main issues that came out that they, the committee wants to delve into more deeply. So we're going to be setting those up with more information as we go to the next meeting. They looked to meet in the afternoon and any day except Wednesday or Friday. So that's where we were, the meeting ended, started at 2:00, ended at 4:30, so it was quite a lengthy meeting for that first one.
Any other questions for Ms. Vouchet? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, I would guess, I'm just taking a guess here, this was the program that y'all had spoke when we had the meeting at the, the safety meeting, the big meeting at the government complex. Yeah, I think, I think this is great, you know, when I'd brought up at the meeting, to have a meeting here, you know, I was thinking in terms of the public coming here, you know, once a month, and have some board members here. Naturally, I'm learning, you know, how things work, and naturally, with y'all's experience, I want to thank y'all for this program. This is, this is a great program y'all come up with, and I had a lot of confidence that y'all could take, you know, take our idea and fine-tune it, because this is, this is very impressive. I don't know, I don't know any, the three board members, I know the rest of the people that showed up, I don't know, the only person I know on air is Judge Bob, and I want to thank Judge Bob for showing up, you know, he's top-notch, he's on top of his game, and I knew him since he was eight years old. And I want to thank y'all once again, I'm very well satisfied with this program. One question I got, you know, I think is going to make a big difference, the public just wants to feel like something's always going to be, we're going to be on top the game of safety, because that's the most important thing in a school of safety. If you feel safe, everyone's safe, you learn more. The only question I got is, how do y'all pick the parents that show up? Would this be different parents at different meetings, or will this be the same parents over and over?
Right now, these were the parents, we wanted a representative at each level. And the high school representative, we asked the person who chaired that town hall meeting, if you remember the meeting that we had at the government complex, that parent who actually moderated that meeting from the parent group, that is Shannon Alfonso. So we asked her to be on it, representing that group of people, since they were initiating this process.
Well, yeah, I'm well satisfied, I don't know any of them, but I know y'all picked people that know what's going on. But if some other parents would, would want to meet, or be on a committee, or show up, this is going to be advertised when the meeting is?
We did, we did put, we did put the meeting on the website.
On the website?
It is on the calendar, yeah.
Okay. And did any other parents show up?
No.
For the meeting? Okay, but it was advertised.
It was on the calendar.
And if another parent wants to show up, they can show up and sit in, and if they want to have an input, they can?
They can listen and they could comment if they so chose.
Thank y'all very much, excellent program y'all come up with. Thank you.
Any other board members?
Mr. Warner, I would just like to take the opportunity to thank all the members of the committee who did come to the meeting. It was a very, I think, productive, constructive committee meeting, and as Ms. Vouchet said, there was a lot of discussion and a lot of ideas. And so I want to thank all of the committee members who, who came, and as, you know, it was a lengthy meeting, and, you know, again, thanks to the committee meetings, to Judge Bob, the representative from the DA's office, and the teachers and principals, we got, we actually had a principal from the elementary, middle, and high school, and then also a parent from each of those levels also, who attended. And they were, they were excellent and gave a lot of great input. So, and to our board members who attended also, Ms. Jackson and Ms. Rodney. And we will advertise the next meeting, which is going to be set soon, and I think Ms. Vouchet is doing a poll of the members of the committee to find a date, and everyone will be invited.
Right, Ms., she's polling the meeting, the members to see if they're available. We are narrowing it to Thursday, March 14th, or Monday, March 18th. So it's one of those two dates, and we're trying to see what date most are available. It's kind of hard with a large group.
Thank you, Ms. Vouchet.
And since, you know, I'm not on a committee, but I'd be allowed to go sit?
Yes.
I didn't know about the last meeting, but I'm having problems with email addresses and all kind of other technical issues.
And Mr. Long?
I'd just like to say, I like the idea of teaching the responsible use of social media, not only for this, this safety course, but I know you mentioned the counselors use that quite a bit to, to teach our students. I really would like to see it incorporated into the high school curriculum some kind of way, because, you know, there's a lot of employers out there, they, they check social media before they hire people. A lot of major corporations across the country. So it's, we need to, I think emphasize, especially to our high school students, that whatever you put on social media, it's, it's out there, and it could be picked up by potential employers. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, there's no action required on this, so back to you, Mrs. Dysart.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Next item are the superintendent's notes, Ms. Vouchet.
Okay, just some, really just some announcements at this point, and reminders, Thursday, February 29th, at Schellman High School, the Rotary Club is sponsoring the spelling bee again. It's always a fun night, if you're interested in coming. Many of the businesses and community groups enter teams, it's an adult spelling bee, not a child spelling bee. And it is to raise money for the Rotary Club, who then turns around and gives it right back to the schools and our students. So that's Thursday, February 29th, at Schellman High School in its larger cafeteria.
Admission's free, doors open at 6:00, bee starts at 7:00.
All right. All right, and then, just the Special Olympics, and I think y'all have a flyer on your, in front of you right now, but just a reminder that that's going to be March 22nd on the field at Schellman High School, that's that Friday from 9:00 to 1:30 in the day. Lots of kids involved, lots of the high school kids are going to be the buddies at the, for each one of these Special Olympians. It's always a very, very fun day, so please mark that on your calendar. Schellman High School Performing Arts Group is putting on the play Oklahoma this year. That'll be March 7th through 10th, those tickets are on sale now. So everybody can go on the website through Eventbrite and purchase tickets for those performance, or one of the performances over that particular weekend. The Cognia Review, and you know, that's our accreditation agency, as I've mentioned before, during the year, we're going through the district-wide review, and on March 14th, they've changed the whole format, so instead of actually coming and visiting the schools, we have presented, we've done all the information, we've presented our assessment review to them, and on the 14th of March, I'll be making a presentation to them, and then hopefully, right after that, we will then receive our renewal of our district-wide accreditation. And we're into the staffing mode already for next school year. Ms. Pritchard and I will be meeting with all of the principals, administrators, and such, with projected numbers for next year. We will staff those the first week in March, and then shortly thereafter, advertise vacancies and such among our own people on a transfer day, and then go out outside the group for our job fair in May. So we are getting ready to staff the next school year. And as I think I've mentioned on that board news, that I send y'all the testing, I just did that to just impress upon you that we are testing just about the entire second semester, which really, somebody somewhere has to look at this and make a determination, this is just too much. Because the individual testing for our special education kids with significant disabilities, our LEAP Connect and our ELL learners, we start February, I think it was 19th or whatever this month, goes all the way through, because you have to do these individually. So it takes a tremendous amount of staff, kids are assessed individually during the months of February, March, April. Then we have ACT testing, we have pre-ACT testing, we have work keys testing, we have LEAP testing. I mean, it, it just never stops. So while we think of LEAP as one week, you know, for three to eight, your high school is constantly testing the entire second semester. And it is, it, it's, it's really over-testing, as far as I'm concerned. In the name of accountability, we've gone overboard in this state and in this country. There is a better way, assessments were supposed to be to inform instruction, and it has turned around into, I think, what exists today. And it really does not inform instruction that much. But, that's my editorial comment on that, I think we, as a state, can do much better if people would kind of lower their defenses and try to work through a system that's best for our children, as opposed to what seems to be politically expedient at the moment. And that's all I have tonight.
Any questions?
I just want to congratulate the Schellman High baseball team, they beat Holy Cross last night 2-0. Baseball team's going to have a good season this year. Also, I don't need it for the next meeting, maybe at the end of the March meeting, I'd like to see the spring enrollment numbers.
Oh, okay, sure will.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Warner, anyone else? Okay, Mr. Rodriguez?
Earlier, we were speaking about the funding for the after-school tutoring program, that it's possible we could lose that funding. Is that something we should start trying to work on, how much it costs, and can we absorb the cost? Is that something we can wait till later on? If we lose it, will we have time to try to address that, or should we start on getting?
Well, you know, as, as we go through our budgeting process for next year, you know, just as we're doing staffing right now, that's really the first piece of developing our budget for next school year. So we look at the staffing issues, we look at the curriculum issues to see what materials we need to provide for that. We look at, each department then sends in to us centrally where they currently stand, what their needs are, what their wishes, what their wants are, and all of that, the tutoring piece in there is included. And then we sit down and try to put all of that together and come out with a plan that we present to you, and you can then, of course, say at that point, well, you know, we think you need to put some more money in for this, and we'll take it out of here and move it in here, and that can be done.
Yeah, I was just, I was just, you know, looking at it, if we was to possibly lose that funding, could we absorb it some type of way? And have a cost on what it would cost, naturally, you're going to have that in your budget.
We will.
Because naturally, that's a very important program.
Absolutely, you're right, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn? Most by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Harris. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting's now adjourned, thank you, and good night.